Are you ready? Do you think we can go ahead again? We'll hold mine. Okay. Okay. And this meeting is called to order and we'll have the roll call being...
Peggy, yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from... Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Through the minutes of July 9th are regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
Peggy.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
It was a special meeting on July 23rd. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Yeah, I'm motioning.
Second.
Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
It was a special meeting on August 2nd. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No, they're good.
Is there a motion to approve the August 2nd minutes as written?
Approved.
I'm going to do a second one.
Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Stan.
Ralph.
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the warrants and the payroll time sheets. So...
Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken. Yes. Ralph.
Yes.
Is there a motion to transfer interest to the respective funds?
Motion, Peggy.
Second.
Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion to transfer the operating funds from the general fund to the police fund.
Motion, Peggy.
Yes. Second.
Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the transfer of grant managing funds from the general fund to the street department fund.
Motion, Peggy. Second.
Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Fine. Okay. Come on out.
Hi. I just want to approach Council to see if I can get the parking sign moved to the block of the antique store and the new salon, which is the Profiles area from that corner. My old salon is 109, which is the green building behind the antique store. Still has a business parking only sign there that is now an apartment and has been for several years. But the sign's been left there, I guess, for a reason because we are in the business area. But there's a lot more apartments there now than were then. And there's not one right beside the antique store, which is now across from my salon. So we only have two spots on our side, two spots on that side, and that's it. And with the apartments and all that in there, it's a little congested and it's really hard for all of our clients to get in there. We know we all have to share, we get that, but we're getting some abuse of that. Like last week, we had a red Jeep parked there for seven days with a Indiana tag that took us about three days to even figure out that it was an apartment above me that has six spots in the driveway that they could've been parking. So anyway, the thing is, is there no parking sign over there? There is one on my side of the street in front of Profiles that says business parking only eight to five. You know, and it doesn't say any days, it just says business parking only eight to five. If we could just move the one just a half a block down from my old salon up to the building right there at the antique store, that at least give us some leeway of saying these are kind of our four spots from eight to five. So I just wanted to approach Council and see if we can get that sign moved. And so we'll leave another spot there, you know, like take the spot away, but then it's going to let that apartment there have, you know, a spot that's not designated business parking, even though they all have spots behind their building too. So it's just a little tricky for me, I don't hate to be bitchy, but I moved from the other block where I had ten spots and I remember this was all my fault, but now I have four. And it's pretty hard. I have a lot of old clients that can't get up to the door. So that would work for everybody, that we can get that moved, that would be great for me, so.
And we're talking about putting it on Washington Street, North Washington Street.
Yeah, right, right beside the antique store. Because he doesn't have one there. I'm only surprised there isn't one there because there's one on my side of the street. And then there's ones all the way down.
There's one across the street.
There's not.
Across the street.
No, the only one there is...
The next block, the next parking lot north from the corner, I thought there was one down by the tow hall.
Yeah, my old salon, that's the one I want to have moved if I can from there just up to this one. Because that's an apartment now. And then the next house is an apartment. So really, they kind of need those two spaces anyway, so it's kind of silly to have a business parking only there.
What happened off the way, you know, old parking lot down there?
I know, but that's another thing I was going to say. We've had several people come in and say, "What is that?" There's no sign there saying public parking. Nobody knows what's there, nobody knows what it's for. A lot of people think it's that apartment in the alleys parking, so they won't park there. So, I know, we need a sign that says that, not that anybody knows that yet. I have a lot of Indiana people.
Well, let's move the sign then.
And so, but even down there, for that lot, if it is a city lot and we can use it, it would be nice to have a sign here that says, "This is public parking, help yourself." You know, it's still a little far down, but at least we know that. So we don't even park there. All my girls, we all park back in front of my old salon, in front of my marathon, because there's nobody up there. Nobody's open. My salon's closed, each of our blocks closed. So it's just easier for us to park up there and free those spots up for our clients, so. So if we could do that, you know, that would be great.
Another issue that we run into, Bonnie, on that bike thing on State Highway, here in another problem just north of town, we tried to make some different parking arrangements not too long ago. And the state got involved with that issue too, and we had an heck of a time.
Well, that's right, because if you call the state and they say, "Well, it's the village, and the village makes the rules there, we can't do that." When I wanted to close it in the alley of this, they told me they had no authority, zip. It is up to the city to block that off and let them know if it is blocked off.
I have a lot of recordings on my phone that say, "Don't move it."
That's what they told me. When I called and tried to move it out from Best Uptown years ago, they said, "Hey, that's up to you guys, that's inside the village. All you have to do is block it, close it, let us know where the deter is, and you're good to go." So I guess it depends on the situation, the person, whatever. I don't know. So anyway, just moving this sign up really twenty feet, you know, just so that apartment can be open and just move us up to those four spots, so. Would that be good?
Yeah.
Is there passion to be taken on this now? Does it need to be taken to look into it? What do you want to do?
I think we should move someone. For her business, for her needs.
Well, it's for everybody, even the antique store. And there's no sign there for him either, so. If you think about it, he's got two in front of his business, but he don't have one beside his business, so it takes up that that long, so. Or the gun shop, whatever.
There are business parking signs in the block. You know, south of that, both sides, correct?
South, yes.
So the block there, Bonnie, can just move from past it.
There's three signs in that lot. And two on the side, the side ones.
You have one on your side.
On my side where you are now. And one around the corner.
North Washington.
Yeah.
And there's one around the corner.
And you're addressing this area.
That whole area. Well, she's not talking about putting another one there. She's talking about the other side of the street.
Which is all...
Where the, um, where the antique store is. The frontage, the parking area along that side.
Right. Because those two, it's just two spots. And then you go to the alley, and then Rick has turned that, my old place, into an apartment now, and has been for years. But there's still a sign right in front of it that says business parking only. And the library will have their signs for another four spots down, so. I think most people would look at that and think the whole thing is, but if there's not a sign there, you can't hold them to it and get them out and move. Probably not, because we don't sign. And the ordinance says, I called the county the other day, I wasn't sure because of that Jeep situation. The ordinance says right now that the car on the road has to be moved every 24 hours. And that's not being done either. That car sat there for seven days. And I called Jeremy twice before we finally got anything on it. But she said they're going to be able to change that to every 48 hours. It used to be 24 hours, but they're being changed to what they said.
But that, Peggy, is, you know, works to make it 48, but that's not 58.
No, no.
And that's not in the restricted parking area either, if it says business, it's business from this time to this...
Right, and it wasn't though. See, there was a sign there, so you could park there, either way, it was still over the city line, it shouldn't have moved anyway, so.
It's up to Council, if someone can make a motion.
I have a feeling there's a reason to not move it, so I'll make the motion, but I don't know what Ralph was talking about. If you had issues before, would it be...
An issue with the state trying to do no parking north of town or the apartment.
When was this? When was this?
When we had to move the Red phone and car department, there were...
Roger's vans. Well, I...
And they dictated what we could and could not do at the time.
What was the reasoning behind that?
There were several reasons.
I didn't hear from the state as to that reason for us not being able to put a sign there. I didn't. I mean, I don't...
You weren't mayor at the time, that was when you...
Yes, I do. I remember that whole incident. I just don't, um, I don't know why the state would object. It's not in the, I understand, but I mean, it's not in the area of the firehouse. It's closer to, and it is a business district, where there are signs everywhere else except that particular side of the block.
It does make it harder, but there are a lot more apartments now. I get that, you know, there were apartments above Profiles before and on the other side, so it's kind of a mix, I get it. But the eight to five is not a lot to ask. Most of those people are working at that type of way and gone, you'd think, but...
Well, if the state did it, what are they going to do? Tell you that you can't do that, tell you to move the sign? I mean, what are they going to do?
I would assume if they can dictate, if they would tell us, you know, I don't know that they would have any reason to do that.
Exactly.
To tell us not to make it business only from those hours.
Exactly.
I don't know.
Common sense tells me that it's, you would make it for business hours.
I mean, most of those signs have been up there for years and years and years. You know, I don't want to ask you to put up an extra one, which I could, because it's still all business in there. I actually say, "Put up one over there and leave that other one." I just want you to move the one where we don't really need it and put it up where we do it, so it's not like there's...
Bonnie, we can't go around doing the sign and go over town just because people are creative business somewhere, you want to...
It's always been a business. How come there isn't a sign in there?
And it's always worked for years up until now, for some reason or another, it's not working now for you. But when the harbor store was there and other stores were there, nobody said anything about it.
Because there wasn't all the apartments taking up all the space.
The apartments still are over top of that store there where you're at.
Yeah, there's two more now. So it's added, you know, two more people per house, that puts two more car numbers, and they all have driveways.
So worst case scenario, we move the sign. State comes in and says it's a problem, and we have to move it back?
You have to take it down. You just have to take it down. It would have to just be removed with actual sign itself.
Right.
Leave it post, I don't know that you would want to, but...
I don't think it's a business area, it's all makes a motion to move the sign.
I agree with that. There's been movement, seconded, that there be any business, no, a business parking only sign moved up to the first block east side of North Washington Street.
And you're going to take it all the way from where it's at?
And it will be removed from 109, the 109...
Yeah.
North Washington, just moved further south.
Peggy.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
John. Do you have something to add?
Oh, yeah, I talked to the Mr. Simmons, County Commissioner, whatever it is.
Jim Simmons in the, uh...
Yeah, he's going to come down there.
Engineer's office.
He's going to come down there, look at the railroad bridge, remove some of the walls down there. But he's not going to make the problem, we got the end of Washington Street. That bridge is too narrow, it needs to be widened to get more water through it. We won't have floods, she's got pictures of it.
What bridge are we talking about?
The West Washington.
That's...
That one.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same bridge.
We had a wider bridge, had to put a concrete buttment in next to it and dig some of that field out.
You know, they came in, they engineered it and did it themselves. We didn't have anything to do, we were grateful because it was about to fall down. But I have heard that, I think it runs through faster. Do you think it does?
Yeah, that's good. I live down here.
John's waiting, let's get John's done now. We can expect somebody from the engineer's office to look over here on this railroad bridge and remove some things.
Yeah, we're going to try to remove the tree, tree balls and some of the trees.
Some of the tree over there.
That will release that down there.
That would be one.
But it's not going to release anything on walnuts.
Okay.
That's overflowing, she's got pictures of it.
Now, see, this is...
It's a smaller bridge opening than any of the other bridges in town.
It seems wide, but it doesn't seem tall.
It doesn't seem tall.
Is that it? You think that's it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it seems...
And you can't go down anymore, because you're on that rock right there. You can't dig it out. You're on...
I, you know, I think they would appreciate hearing, but I don't know, Gerald, where it's getting onto your property? How it's getting onto you?
That's where you're... See, the last flood we had was flooded Jerry out, or out. It came to four inches, knocking out the creek on Hudson Street.
There's a telephone pole up from the stop sign down there. It's coming across Jerry's house over there, and there's the other property. She did it twice, it's that bridge, she's made it, did it twice. Then it was...
Show me again. Where's the bridge in...
It's down there.
Yes.
Two holes down.
The bridge is down in position for that car stop.
Jerry, I'm calling it, yeah.
And he's coming. But I was very early to that.
Yeah. Probably.
I mean, I don't get it. It's not a really wide ditch, and in some places it's not very deep. But the only obstruction I saw in the ditch itself, there's a tree down that would touch things if they happened to hit up against it.
That was an edge. I cut that out, nobody else did. I got down to the song, cut it out myself. But it's only like about three and a half foot deep right there, and it's over your head when you get down to the bridge.
And that's the bridge.
And this comes out, it's dug out all the way down there. But the telephone poles are right there, so if they fall off...
It would have car parked in the actual side of the bridge once that wall was straight right there.
I mean, if you cut that bridge, it's...
I run through it.
It's...
It's cut across the road.
I'll even take care of it.
I think I'm very confused. Yes, yes.
We're shot by a car wash, and...
It's the bridge itself, yes.
And that's that significant third, you know, people just get all the bad, get hurt in that, I'm like...
I hope that's, you know... Now, we're going to... So we need to talk to the state or your system. Like you said today, it's hard to walk in, right? I couldn't move your out. I went in for it, I went in for it. Going as possible, and that bridge is way down for that though. And they're now, it starts washing, and we're red blood, and I'm...
Okay, okay, they're going down to Jerry's place, and nobody wants to...
Especially down...
I'm sorry, Jerry, you don't hear me.
There's a person in this town.
Don't worry, it's long.
Yeah.
We're going to make it happen, though. Oh, will you be able to tell me, I can print it at work. Well, yeah. Just give me your... What, we can get it, just write it down. So I can print it at work, that's...
And then, the other thing, because on the other side of the bridge on West Side, where the walnuts are, it's a lot wider and a lot deeper. And whenever the, maybe the river gets out, it pushes the water back up into that, and there's some stops that follow too.
I know, white people... No, we did.
Those guys are engineers.
Yeah. And I'll just print them. Okay. Can you see this? Steve gets that, too, and he got pictures, the chief pictures, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Just email it to me, or, yeah, email it to me, and then I'll print them out and we'll have... That way I can email them to everybody else.
Susan was here today.
Yes.
Jimmy, I brought that up. Your Susan, did you hear?
Yes.
The state's all you actually like today.
Yes.
And Susan said she was going to contact the state because we actually shook a bit of...
Yeah, I had a video with her.
Yeah, boat over there, that creek. Ever since they started that bridge, the type of bridge.
It has been, yes.
It goes up in the sun and ran across everybody else. So we discussed that with Susan, but she said she was going to try to contact...
And I think maybe I'll call two. I mean, the more people, she's going to have more expertise, but it doesn't work to have a lot of screen people calling you about something. But, you know, yes, I couldn't figure, by the time I got down there, I couldn't figure out how, where it was going and how bad. But it's not a deep ditch, and it's not a wide ditch down there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's been high, something forty's just coming out.
Okay. You know, that high street bridge is another case that needs...
Right.
And we know that.
And we drive into the middle of the, on the north side, and see the regular kind of forest, but coming now, something's going right down there.
Yeah.
They're all over, the alley machine shop.
Parting off. And that's where the park. But, yeah.
Up on that...
Yeah.
It's always the county, you know...
It is not that, the county can come and look, I'm sure, but the state didn't work, and the state engineered the bridge. So it's the state who will be... Yes, they did.
They did, and they just...
Because, yes, the state did it. So we will have to go to the state, and Susan will do that and make the plate. And so will I, and so will at the end... Oh, we maybe just put the phone number out for everybody to call. You know, if we don't get some kind of decent response, because you didn't have this problem before. I have a question. Are you getting floodwater?
No, no.
Okay. Because that I really couldn't figure out. No, I don't know. Okay. But it's going to Jerry's. Now, I can understand how to get flood down there, but I couldn't figure out how it's getting there, so, yeah. But I would see.
It happens so fast, I said, "I got a full basement, it's a driving basement." And by the time you see the water coming, you can't get down the basement and get anything out.
I understand.
Four and a half foot deep, and then it levels out at four and a half foot.
We can throw the water for me, like...
I did it first. Well, you know, the whole town runs that way. Everything drains toward you. And, uh, yeah.
The water at the bottom.
Yeah. Anyway, we will... Susan, Lass, our engineering person, has some video. We're going to get these pictures, we need to print them. We'll go to the state, she's going there, we may send her these also. And we're going to see what they, you know, and we can't fraud them to come in here and do a little stunt with that, because...
Well, who's interested just to dig that out and try to...
And pull that out.
Like an edge, and try to edge just to dig that deeper. Whose job is that? That's, is that Towns or is that the county or...
Now, where are we talking about?
Like, that or that.
And if you thought the big house on the corner there, or are you in the same block as Jerry?
I'm on the same block as Jerry.
Okay.
Yeah, the, what's right across the street from her and from me, from our front, that...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that. Whose job is it to dig that out?
You did it there.
I don't know if they would do it or not to make it...
Well, if they have to, it's going to...
That's not a way to wash them away.
Because they just, I said, "It'll be deep before it comes out."
I'm sure they'll give us a recommendation if they don't give us anything as to what needs to be done to it.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I say it was very poor engineering on the bridge, didn't have this fine problem, as far as I can remember.
It scares me that, you know, we have something like 99 happen again. It'll be ugly down there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I appreciate that. Does anybody else have anything else on that subject?
Just email it to me and... Run something in to everybody else, see if that water can stir up.
Thank you. So that's John and Steve. And city reports? Safety.
Police Department handled any calls for service.
That's fine, Gerald, thank you. Just wait a minute. Okay, we're going to go ahead with the meeting, and go ahead, Jeremy, have a police report.
Police Department handled any few calls for service, made seventeen reports, three arrests, issued four citations, and eleven points. One thing I do have on here is the National Team Agreement for dry silver getting pulled over. I'll cut it off now. Begins always 17th of this month, it runs to, I want to say September 3rd. So that will be something I think we will be on, ever so I do. The only other thing I have...
I'm starting to mean it now.
The only other thing I have is, I have an applicant that I would like to, I talked about earlier, earlier about. I'd like to recommend him on whether condition terms, that as long as he passes some of that test. We need, we needed council to approve that tonight to move forward with this gentleman. If he passes his test, and everything works out all right, we can hard him before the next council meeting.
All right. Just move him to one.
Right. He's sworn in.
And has he completed his training with these...
He's been a police officer before. The only thing on the way back is for his drug screen.
Okay.
Called the other.
Everything else is...
Everything else is good, there.
What's his prison name?
Joe Grochey.
And where does he live, Jeremy? Okay.
I can't discuss where people live.
Okay, that's probably true. I'm sorry, we don't want to give it...
It's a safety issue.
I'm sure, I got it. Is he local? Fairly local?
Fairly, very.
Okay. That's all I need to know. He's lived in the time with us? If I want to find you for that, they'll find out he's time with us, and just try to round big service.
We...
And... Do you recommend that?
I do.
Okay, then, yes, we need a motion to hire him.
I'm going to make a motion, we hire Joe Protsman, P-R-O-T-S-M-A-N. If he passes his drug screen and the rest of his tests that he's taking, I'd like to ask council to approve his hiring, so that the mayor can be square in it as soon as he gets his test result back.
This is a part-time position.
Yeah.
Right, how about salary? It would be any regular part-time pay, I'm assuming? Do you want to add that in there?
Yes.
Is that $10.10? There is a motion...
And a probationary period along with that that we won't leave.
Ninety days.
Are you agree with that, Mr. Chief?
Yes.
So the motion is to hire Joe Protsman conditionally on the fact that he passed all his tests as a part-time police officer. Probationary until, for the ninety-day period after the state hire, and at a salary of $10.10 per hour. Is there a second to that?
One second. Peggy. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
You have anything else, Jeremy? Thank you. Bill, please. For his own bill of committee, because I have a question about Bill.
Mayor, just earlier.
Luther, could you do me a favor and go up to the bus barn, the old bus barn at the school property at the park, and take a look at the roof up there, far south end? See if it's leaking, if it needs work, what needs beat up with that?
Okay.
Okay? I would appreciate that. I would appreciate that.
Yep.
Is there any other business in the building area that we know of?
Yes. The old laundry mat.
Well, that's not our building. We're talking about ours right now. I know that old laundry mat is an eyesore.
Wow.
We don't know what to do about it.
There is kids in it the other night.
They are peeing out in it.
Yeah, there's some kids in it. I walked into over there and they peeked their head up, they had a flashlight and I shined it out and it kinda scared them and they jumped out of the window and then.
Now, if we can, I suppose, speak to the owner of the building about securing him a little bit better. I don't know, it's not gonna go away, but at least, I mean, he's liable. If somebody gets in there and gets hurt, it would be a shame if that happened. So let us see if we can talk to Dan Zan and see if there's something we can't do.
Get back to safety.
Sure, we're gonna skip right back to safety.
Jeremy's reviews about this month.
Yes.
And with three of them being out of town as much as we have, then we'll get a chance to get together and review that. I'd like to set up a plan to do that so that council meeting and September's meeting to through this, retroactive back to the state if we could. Would you be all right with that, Jeremy?
Do you have a time, a date?
I left it open for the best.
Jeremy, do you work evenings at all? Are you here any evening at all? Because Kim would be unavailable, I think.
Unless my phone rings. When's his review due? You work there.
It's due this month. I'm not sure what day.
Yeah. I can make an arrangement.
How late are you here? If Kim had to leave work early to come in.
Still have.
Just letting you know.
I think he's still, he won't take that. One day, Jeremy, take one.
What did you say to her this week?
I'm not sure what I got this week either.
It probably.
Have time of day off this week because the bill went out.
The bill went out yesterday or today.
Well, next week.
Or the bill was due today.
I have several days in the week open and really, I'm open any time at that time of day next week.
Next week, I have nothing but work.
What have you got?
Monday.
Monday, on the thirteenth, four thirty, can you get me to do that? All right.
Would you have that here?
Yeah, I'm doing. I'm sorry.
What are you doing?
We are doing a review. The safety committee will review and I'm just gonna sit in on it. I'm not, you know, because that's been the practice, the mayor to be there now.
So they're doing, they're doing a review for?
For Jeremy.
A few.
Okay. And because his, his year, his annual review is due this month. So we're gonna do it on the thirteenth and then we'll let you guys know how it went and we'll vote to see if there's a raise and, and yes, all that in our September meeting. All right? Okay. We've done the building, we've done state. Is there anything else? We're gonna do, um, streets.
Streets. Brinner, the subcontractor, Beckerman, has been working on Cherry Street as everybody knows. They should be done, their service lines by the end of this week, but they're running to the individual residence. They will shut off that main that's going down to the village Cherry Street that's sitting there now by the end of the month.
Okay.
And hopefully with the line of the wall be hooked up and ready to go.
Because down there will be gas lines down both sides. Five miles down Cherry Street.
One on the north and one on the south. Jimmy also repaired a spot on Jefferson Street where the water main is broken and they had to tear up the street there for that. The bids for the Cherry Street project will be closed. The closing bid on that will be September the fifth. Information with us. And also Beckerman will be doing the same thing in the future for next year's project down Washington Street, stop the town from cherry-stomp. They'll have part of that tore up too because of the new blacktop and sets that we're gonna.
We're gonna get that done before we pay, before the state comes in the day.
Folks will do that, yes.
Okay. Okay.
And it'll be approximately the same type of construction that's been going on now on Cherry Street. So it'll be the same thing on Washington and South Washington.
Okay, we'll go ahead and catch all their spots, right? What they're doing now?
Right. And move the meters like they're done and that type of stuff.
Okay.
Shut that information just to the.
Good. Well, that's good. Lights?
Yes. Before, um, Luke got off of lights, Luke and I did lights. He took it one month and I did it the other month.
Okay.
And so I did the July, so.
We're being, Aaron, to go around and take a peek at all the surface of street lights or.
I did yesterday. There is one on Spring and Pearl. It's not hooked up, but that's it. Anything else here to be gone?
That is due to an accident?
Yeah. I assume because it looked like the wire snapped off. Yeah.
And my, my lighting is supposed to be repairing that in the future. The poles might be re-straightened.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It has been documented.
But you can have that one.
But that is allowed to play the hour.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Maggie.
We received our audit and findings this week.
While we're talking about that, we have a bill for that audit that we have to pay. This is the final billing for the partial audit that we had completed.
Five hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
Do you want to move to pay that bill?
I moved to pay this bill.
You let me do that? It's been moved a second, that we paid his bill, but we have a choice.
Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Ken. Yes, Frau.
Yes.
All right. The audit was completed and everyone got a copy of the findings, I'm sure. The only things I saw were procedural things that had either changed in the last several years or a different auditor sees things differently, is the only thing I can tell you. All our money is fine, there, there are just a couple of procedures they would, we're gonna try to change and comply with this one. They'll probably tell us the next time they do it that it was not necessary, they want us to do it back the other way. In line with that, the thirteenth is the anniversary date for Mandy. I did her review. Um, she has a good performance record, I think. We haven't had any problems. Our audit shows that everything has been worked, other than, as I said, two or three procedural things that somebody wants done differently. Um, I would move that, you know, we share Mandy's services and her salary with the Board of Public Affairs. So I would move that we vote her a one point five percent raise, give the board so chooses they can do the same, that will give her her three percent.
Second.
I'm not moving like that. Yeah, I would just, I'm suggesting.
I'll move then. I'll move.
Can you, can you repeat that?
I'll move.
Okay. What do you need me to say again? The whole thing?
Yes.
We did Mandy's review.
Okay.
I think Mandy's doing a good job. I have not had complaints from any people about her and I've not had any, her, the audit, which is all about her job and how she does it, was fine. The audit had a few things that they just wanted done, I moved differently, but all the money's accounted for at present. Everything, they all gave a teeter-crow at the eye of the daughter. They just had a procedural thing that they wanted done a little differently a couple of times. In light of that, I did her review and I feel that she is due a raise. We share her salary with the Board of Public Affairs. She works for them also. She does the water billing, she does, you know, all their meetings just as she does ours and pays their bills just as she does ours. So we share her salary. I, I would like to see the council give her, and the motion has been made to increase her salary, we would increase it by one and one-half percent and we would leave it to the board to do the same if they wish to. That would give her her three percent increase, which has been standard. If the motion has been made, seconded?
Seconded.
I think so.
Yes. Maggie. Yes. Luther.
Yes.
Aaron. Yes. Ken. Yes, Frau.
Yes.
Okay. Sanitation? Got anything else?
Yes. On that two oh seven High Street, well, there was just a horrible condition up there, but those people are working on cleaning up and it looks better than it did and they're still looking. Cherry and Locker is in progress. Where the Alton, they won't have. Um, there's a car that's been removed on one oh seven East Central, um, seven hundred West Cherry. Been mowed a lot there. And on one forty-four North Washington, they tore the garage down, it was good. Four oh seven East Cherry, Les Spencer has been going at, I live right here in that area, and he's been going that for a long time. Um, and then on two oh four Lincoln Street, um, he did the backyard, Les did the backyard, but not the front because he couldn't get his riding mower in the gate, which is a small gate. They're gonna have a auction there and so they, they're gonna, Bob was gonna, told me he was gonna.
That's Miss Davis's place, right?
Yes, yes. Okay. And then on the, uh, Van Zant, the old laundry mat, he had talked to him about it. He said that he had somebody looking at it. That's all I can say. That's what he said to me. And, uh, he said he'd get back with me later, so.
And make sure he knows that. I'm sure he does know because the kids are getting in there, they're doing things and we need trace. But make sure he knows that children have, or young people or something, I don't know, the adults around here. But anyway, there are people getting into that building.
He knows that.
Okay. And.
And he's got insurance on the obvious insurance.
Well, I hope so because he's got liability for anything he happens to.
So that's all we have. Oh, thank you. Jane's not here tonight, so that's all we have at this time.
Now, I do have a question for you and it's, it's my understanding and you all would know this, that there was a little bit of discussion last meeting, last regular meeting about the sanitation ordinance? Did we have discussion on that? Are we ready to do anything with the weeds, grass and noxious weeds ordinance?
Okay, who's on that, uh, Brett?
That's you and Mary Jane, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, just us two. Um, we talked about it, but I'm not that familiar with what they did. Has Mr. Kowach, has he set up a new ordinance for sanitation?
Not in total, no, but he did do the one that takes care of, it's the easiest one to take care of. As far as, well, and as far as this is the penalty if you don't do it and how easy it would be to take care of it. If you don't do it, we're gonna do it for you and you're gonna have to pay for your taxes. I think that's why he broke that out into a separate thing because that can go in and be enforced without all the rest of that. There's a part of that other, the one we're on, we have right now, that's cumbersome and it makes the whole thing cumbersome to enforce. Um, I, I just wondered if we're ready to do anything. Apparently we're not with the litter of weeds, noxious weeds and all that in the village. We're not ready to go move on that.
Well, I think, I don't, I don't think so. Mary Jane does, and she knows more about this than I do.
Okay. Well, you know, we've been sitting on these things all summer. I'm just wondering what, and we paid for them, you know, and I'm, it's just my question as to where we're gonna go with these. And we wanna remember that we have them and if we need to pass them, we're almost done with weeds this year anyway, but if we need to get these things passed, we should be doing that. So if you wanna talk to Mary Jane and find out what's going on there, I, I don't know if we need something entirely different or what, but, um, I appreciate knowing where we stand with some of this stuff and I think everybody else would too. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Planning, I don't believe Scott had anything. The board of Public Affairs is here. Couple of, do you have anything to bring to our attention?
We had our pre-construction meeting today on the Washington Street project.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the contractor was here and Susan was here also. Uh, the work is tentatively scheduled to begin a week from Wednesday on the fifteenth of August.
Okay.
The contractor will be moving in and starting to work. Uh, it's rose construction, who wanted to bid on it? He's not our member, so it's a few rows. That makes it really difficult. So, uh, there could be a possibility, if we have any change orders or anything in the project, that we might have to have a special meeting with the board and the council. We won't know that, of course, until construction starts. Uh, like I say, he's anticipating, saying the year of Wednesday, the start a week from this Wednesday. Uh, they will be, they'll have to leave for two weeks in September from the.
Another obligation that they have.
Ninth to the twenty, they're, they got something else on the wall, that's all I can tell you, I don't know why, but he said it would not be working from the ninth to the twenty-third, I believe it was, but he anticipates it will be done before the first October.
Wonderful.
Completely.
Great.
So he anticipated that.
Just pray for good weather and hope they can get it done.
It's gonna work four ten-hour days, fourth, Monday through Thursday, ten-hour days. And we'll maintain one lane traffic. They have first flag and all that that was in bid, so any state highways will have to maintain the traffic as it were. So I want to make counsel aware of what's going on and the project is proceeding pretty quickly. And like I say, if something comes up and we're contacted by him, well, then we might have to sort of get an emergency meeting or if that happens before your next council meeting order.
Okay, well, we'll just try to be as obliging as we can be. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Resolution and ordinance, we have discussed the two that are the ones hanging. Is there anything else to talk about in resolution and ordinance?
I don't know.
I don't know anything either.
Maggie, if you wanna know Mary Jane, you'll want me to see if you have any help with your resolution. On that ordinance for weeds, if you and Mary Jane would like some help, just get with me. Okay? I can sit down and go over some stuff, see what you can pick changes to. Okay. Great. We'll do that.
Okay, Park.
Uh, that's up to Rob.
Hey, I don't think who Rob tells me there. You're in trouble, aren't you?
Don't have much other than there are two lights that were up there by the one shelter area that at one time was covered by chamber.
Yes.
And no longer working and I would like to find out whether they're just continuing using those lights or not.
At one time, there was a kind of ring that we would give those lights to keep them on when the chamber wasn't, when it wasn't Applefest.
Well, they're out and they're not working.
But I don't think we have, we have had a bill that-
They come here?
It does come here, so we are-
What time is 1:15 last night?
We are paying those.
15:00 we came up over there.
Then I need to look into the reason why they're not working then. Have you noticed they're not working too cheap?
Yeah, they have worked since Applefest.
Have been, they haven't worked since Applefest?
They showed.
Oh, yeah, they worked since Applefest.
Yeah, they worked since, I don't know. Not too much longer after that.
Well, you need to figure out if they cut them off, sure or not.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, whether they sat or, but I didn't know for sure whether I'm still under the umbrella of the chamber or whether they're ours.
I think the agreement was we pay for them just to have lighting up there for safety reasons.
We won't continue to look.
Yeah. Let us find out what, if, yeah, if they just shut them off and, you know, they're not getting a bill, so they probably think that's fine. But I know that the first year those lights were up there, we agreed to pay for them for the remainder of the year if they paid for them during the time.
My fault, my fault. And then after they went out, well, it's not worth it.
Well, we can charge the chamber.
We'll look into that. Look, sir, you can argue, we'll look into that.
Where are these lights at?
They're by the south shelter area of the park.
Okay.
Or the basketball court.
Okay, got you. Oh, yes.
There are two lights there.
Okay. We have received a check from the American Legion. We'll post here for $500 for the park. It was a donation made to the park fund here, so thank you.
What month was that?
What month? It was this, it was July. The check was written on the 27th of July.
Okay. And then they gave us, did they not give us another check for $500 on the 27th of July? That's your one method? Okay.
Anyway, thank you to the, thank you very much to the American Legion. And when you see the members there, make sure you mention that too, though. I appreciate that.
I think you're talking about the one for the police department that we got back in.
Name?
Then it was covered in the council meeting too.
Okay.
May?
It's supposed to be for more of a day, but we got it.
So you were, I think Jeremy reported that to you?
I also had $40 donated by Peggy Bishop to the park fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder why I get $40?
Yeah.
I get a check every month for being on the council and I give, and I always give my check to Amanda for the park.
Well, thank you. That's very nice. Okay. Unfinished business. I have one thing and it deals with our income tax. You know, this year, the people in Cleveland did disallow the half percent to credit that people working in Wayne County paying their income tax have been getting all along. Our latest copy says they get that half a percent credit. So I think that local tax people have already talked to Cleveland and told them this, but I'm going to send them this. And if anybody wants a copy of this, they can have it. But it was the latest ordinance we passed on the income tax and the one passed previously in 2011. Both call for a credit if your tax by another municipality up to and one-half of a percent. So people in Wayne County can take that half percent as they have been doing. We have, in new business, the chamber has sent us something to see if we want to donate to the Applefest. I don't think as a village we're in position to do that, but if anybody would personally like to make a donation, I have paperwork here. Manu will have it at the desk. She can make you a copy if you'd like to make donations to the Applefest. There are several from $1,000 down to $50, you know, several. And I'm sure they would take 10 if you want to give to. There's that.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Have a family issue I have to attend to, so-
We are fine. We're almost finished, so you may go if you wish.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
I have to attend that.
I've never had the communications really that I want. Does anybody else have any business? Next meeting will be September 10th due to the Labor Day holiday. We'll be here on the September 10th at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Hey, we just got someone to say?
Surely.
We need to slow the golf cart prices around a tiny bit.
I beg your pardon?
We need to slow the golf cart, well, we got people hanging off the sides of them now and everything. Let's make them legal or impound them, put them on Christmas roll back to you.
For Chris.
Yeah.
Just get him driving.
Yeah, we just got the equipment. I mean, everybody's a little paid to see. If they're legal, you can pound them, make them nice.
I think that we have said you may drive them on the streets as long as they have a slow moving vehicle sign and they are licensed. Is that correct?
What it was was before that and now I've been stopping them. Actually, that really meant they have to be inspected or they can not be.
All right.
Because under the, we got, okay, you just stopped. Under our ordinance, it basically states that they're allowed to operate along the streets, but they must be inspected and placed. And there's a whole list of requirements.
Something to be assured to.
There's a whole list of stuff that they have to have that all under an order for them to be qualified to be placed on. I've stopped maybe seven, eight this year in the summer. Just for not having, not including the off train vehicles and stuff like that also.
Okay.
Now, I'm out here 24 hours a day, I'm here seven days a week. So, you know, that is one thing that I can afford that they seem to solve with the day I'm at.
Because they do have to be placed and in order to be placed, they have to have all these other things in place. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Now, where do they go to take care of things like an inspection? Where can we send them?
They get inspected, they make contact. If they live inside the village and or a seasonal camper, which means they are required to camp around the road for six months for the time that they're open, then that will do the inspection.
Okay. If they don't, but they still, you know, I don't know why they're being down. But if they don't live here, where can we send them? You know, Jeremy, who would do it? Is there, I mean, will any local policeman inspect it?
As far as I know, there's nobody in Kirkland.
No one?
The problem is the B and B is telling people for three hours to wait for them.
Okay.
They got a list, there's actually a list that the B and B actually gives off slow moving vehicle inspection board that they're actually going to handle. Which I don't know if they just started this year or not, but I did get a copy of it from another guy who came in here in America or something. There's actually a list, they go up here, they even get the list and it basically states these are golf cart friendly communities.
What's on the grid? Has it signs?
They have signs, but they're not on this list. And everybody is-
Well, why aren't they?
That I don't know.
You know what? Because they haven't told anybody because they don't want, their inspector doesn't want all the people coming over there.
I don't know if they still do the inspections over there, not because since their old chief wanted to camp it out, but they do.
So we don't tell anybody else in the county?
I don't know if anybody else in the county.
Because, you know, I had a call from somebody, it was looking for somebody to do it. They don't live in town, but they have relatives who live in town and they're local people and I didn't know what to tell them. Then I guess they found out, they could go, Wayne County could do it. I mean, you could get a gun.
I mean, according to-
Mother County maybe?
According to Ohio, it's supposed to be your local sheriff, your local police.
Okay.
It doesn't. It's just an inspection of the motor vehicle, inspection of the slow moving vehicle. Problem is, from what I understand, the way actually has to fall. So the B and B now has an official, they actually have, so I don't know if they still do it or not. Unless I do, the way has to break down.
So that's something that somebody who's interested could look into a little bit further.
Yeah.
To see if there's not somebody who shares the car that would do it in county or whatever.
That's what I think.
Well, I just, no, that's fine, but that's where they need to be going.
Yeah.
Really, right?
To do.
To share. Okay. Thank you very much. And we do try to keep an eye out for crazy people. You know, we don't want people getting hurt or we're to cause someone else to have an accident because they're out running around these golf carts. And we do stop.
Everybody out at 4:30 in the morning with their lights, and I'm sitting out drinking coffee. And now we're seeing the whole town, now we go back to the bar.
They go right outside town here.
Well, see, under the section, they're not going to be on any street or any road as long as it's posted at 35 miles per hour or 400. If they go over, pass the office here and they're on 55 mile per hour roads or 50 mile per hour, then technically-
You're violating.
You're violating the law. But it doesn't give a time restriction, it doesn't say, you know, anything like that where they can't be operating between, you know, two or three, five and one or two or five. As long as they're still buying by the wall, buying by what it is. Like I said, I'm out here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but I have four of the officers that usually get them. Maybe the part they have to get the inspector, they have to buy by law. I'm sorry about that. I hope so, normally at 8 o'clock, they take a phone call, they're going to pull the plug on my road and all. I missed the phone call.
Sorry. No, it's okay.
Phone call. Sorry. And the big case is one reason why they stop people, even with the triangle there. If they're involved with carts, it's still going to be their fault. Somebody runs the red light, somebody stops it, it's a, they're technically legally on the road and they need to go. And perhaps we play it over because it is a slow moving vehicle, it's still parked under that section there. But best thing to do, get them inspected, get the place on, get the insurance on them. It covers them from having any other vulnerability or something that's happening.
Yes, I agree.
So this past year, I've been trying to force that check.
And that's fine. That's fine. I, we want people to be as safe as we can make them and you can't force people, we smart sometimes unless you do. Have a law of it, since they're-
You got a golf cart at 4617, hang off of it.
You know, if we see that, I can promise you, they're going to stop them. But if we don't see it, we can't do anything and they're going to get hurt and it's going to be their own fault. I mean, I, I just, I don't know what else to tell you. Is there any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I see one. I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To adjourn the meeting.
Oh. Yeah. I adjourned.
All opposed, say aye. Okay. We're going to adjourn.
Hey, I want your board back too.